It's being six o'clock on Monday, March 18th. We'll call to order the regular Winuski City Council meeting. Please start by joining me, joining us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilor Hal Colston.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So first item on the agenda is Agenda of Review. Just quickly, are there any requested changes to the agenda today? Hearing none, we will move to public comment. This is the time where any member of the public can make a comment about an item that is not on the agenda. So if there's anything else that you want to address today? All right. We will move next to the consent agenda. In our consent agenda for approval today, we have the City Council and Liquor Control Minutes of March 11, 2019, and Payroll Warrant for Period February 24 to March 9, 2019. Are there any corrections, questions, or comments from council? Any from the public? So I would entertain a motion to approve City Council and Liquor Control Minutes of March 11, 2019, and Payroll Warrant for February 24 to March 9, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by House, second by Jim. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is our city updates.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of updates tonight. Just want to remind you, I'm going to keep, actually, I'm going to remind you one more time, that we are holding our Equity and Diversity Summit on April 6 at the Senior Center. It's an all-day event. Invitations went out last week. Participants in that will be any people, not anyone, but people with formal and informal authority in the city to talk about our identity as a city, how we identify personally, our unconscious bias, and how we sit together as policymakers and leaders in the community and best represent all of our residents. So invited on that list are obviously all of you, our leadership team, and some other staff from our team, the school trustees, anyone who sits on an appointed board or commission in Winuski. And then we have about 10 to 12 staff coming from the school as well, or staff and students coming from the school. There are some students doing a piece of work for us on the history of Winuski as well, which will be great. And they'll be participating in the day and sharing that information with us. So I look forward to seeing you all there. Downtown Winuski is going through a hiring process for their new executive director. The former council authorized about $53,000 of fund balance to help fund that executive director in the first year. They are down to two finalists, and we'll be interviewing those two finalists this coming Thursday evening at 7:00. So I think you all are invited to participate in that and come and meet those two final candidates if you're interested. Heather has been working on wayfinding RFP as part of a state grant. Responses to that were due last Friday. We've received six proposals, which is great. So we're in the process of reviewing those, and we'll make an award decision by the end of the month. The Myers Memorial Pool is officially out to bid, so that those bid documents hit the street last Friday. And we are expecting, so bid opening is scheduled for April 10 to give contractors the time to review and respond, and we will be awarding contracts by early May. As you probably know, Burlington Airport is completing a master plan, similar actually to our master plan, that outlines their priorities, both capital and programming, for the next couple of years, and then ties those priorities to future funding requests from the FAA. I sit on their Regional Advisory Committee for that process, and their next meeting is March 26 at 5 at the airport. And that is a public meeting, and anyone interested in kind of the future of the airport and where things are going are welcome to attend. And then some, always leave the fun updates for the end, some community services updates. So our Summer Thrive program enrollment is now open. People can enroll here at City Hall or on the website. That summer schedule goes from June 24 through the last week of July, or the week that ends July 29. We are partnering with an organization called Wicked Cool Kids to host April Vacation Camps and summer programming for youth in grades 1 through 5. So that in April, that programming will focus on what's called Extreme Earth and wicked fab physics lab. So again, you can get more information on the website. And then in the summer, those summer camp offerings will be around Legos and a med school camp. So fun and exciting for our first through 5th graders. And then just a final reminder that the community garden plots are now available for registration. We have a few left that opened on Friday. So if people are interested in new community garden plots, encourage you to go to the website and sign up soon.
Thank you. Next we have Council Reports, which as a reminder is a time to share anything, anything you've done in your role as councillor since our last meeting, or if there's an event that's on your radar in the community, or just any community news you want to share as well. I will start down here with you, Mike, this time.
I don't really have anything to report except for the pool. The pool has a new, they're going for a new grant, which I've been aware of. And they have until April 12 to raise $10,000 to get to the second hurdle. It has been on Front Porch Forum, and I suggest, or not suggest, but I think people should check it out. And they have the direction somehow to donate. Again, they're trying to raise $10,000 for April 12 to get to the second round. It's up to $2 million, but it's going to be spread out for other communities. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything to report?
I do not have anything.
That also is sometimes the answer. I have been really busy since the last meeting, although I don't remember everything I've done. I have had meetings with each of the new councillors to kind of get you all up to speed on background information. I am having a meeting next week with Burlington Mayor Weinberger to just do an introductory relationship there as we work together with them on regional issues in the airport and stuff. If there's something that you want to, I don't know, if there's something on your mind that you want to make sure that I cover, please feel free to let me know. And that is it for now.
Okay. So the Community Service Commission is meeting on the 27th of March. And I think two of the big items are going to cover, they're looking at their survey results to try to get a better handle on how they're doing and what's needed in terms of programming. And they're going to look at their scholarship policy. That's it.
Thank you.
And the only thing I'll add is, it's not related to my duties as council, but did attend the JFK Fund Fair at the Winuski School District on Friday. And it was an awesome event for kids and people in our community. So I just really wanted to take a moment to acknowledge this work the school did in putting that on and how great it is for our students to have access to that.
Thank you. All right, we will move to our regular items now. Our first item on the agenda today is the appointment of Councilor Hal Colston as Deputy Mayor. Hal, you have the most seniority here and a lot of knowledge in other realms of the community, so would love to make you my Deputy Mayor.
I accept.
Excellent. This is an appointment, so no official vote is required. Are there any legal words that I have missed?
I don't think so. I mean, I would recommend you vote on it.
Okay.
I think it's, per our charter, it just says the Deputy Mayor shall be among, or appointed from among you, I think to just give ourselves a vote would probably be useful.
Safer?
Safer.
All right. I would entertain a motion to appoint Hal as our Deputy Mayor.
I move to.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Jim. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries then. Thank you, Hal.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approval of Mayor and Council Procedures Policy. So I saw, so we discussed this at our last meeting, and I saw in the cover sheet that there was a language update to signage post, or agenda posting?
Yeah, so the only change that I've made since the last, since your last discussion on this was clarifying the language about where the agendas would be posted, and allowing for additional meeting, the open meeting law requirements, but also allowing for additional posting. So it's on, it's Article 4, Section B. And just to be very specific, we are designating the following public places in the municipality as where we will post agendas, and that's at City Hall, at the school district, and at the library. So locations where, that get a lot of foot traffic and a lot of different kinds of foot traffic across our community. And then we will also endeavor to post at TD Bank and in the O'Brien Community Center main lobby. But other than that, it's as presented last week.
Were there any, any other comments or concerns, or things that any of you wanted to see added?
I have a question. Why the TD Bank? Is that a busy spot for people, or I mean?
So a couple of reasons. It is a busy spot. It's right downtown, other than City Hall, it's a location that's very centrally located, right on the rotary. It's also where we as a city do our banking, so we are there every day to make deposits. So it's easy for us, and it is reflecting that it is the, one of our local banks.
Okay.
Anything else from council? Any comments or questions from the public? On the procedures policy? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Mayor and Council Procedures Policy as is.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Hal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is to approve the Conflict of Interest Policy, which we also reviewed at our last meeting.
So again, so there are no changes to this policy from what was presented at your last meeting. This policy is the policy that the former council adopted, and is based on the model policy written by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. So their lawyers have crafted it with the state requirements in mind, as well as our, and we have adopted this along, in accordance with our local charter as well.
Thank you. And I don't recall there being any request for changes at the last meeting. Are there, is there anything to add at this time? Any questions, comments from the public? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Conflict of Interest Policy.
Second.
Motion by Amy, second by Hal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So I thought that timing was going to work perfectly. I think you actually need to take about a minute and a half recess.
All right, we will take a brief recess until 6:15 when we will reconvene for our public hearing item. A public hearing has been noticed for the consideration of the new master plan, being 6:15 as was so noticed. I would like to open the public hearing. This is a time to take comment from the public on the master plan. I believe we also have some presentation occurring.
That's correct.
I will pass it to you first then.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Once again, I'm Eric Borwald, I'm your Planning and Zoning Manager. So I'm here tonight to, with Regina Mahoney from the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, to provide an overview of the Winuski Master Plan update. This is the second public hearing, the second of two required public hearings that we are having. So following this hearing, if you so choose, you could adopt the master plan. So the, and some of this will be a little bit of a recap from the orientation meeting last week, but more for the public hearing side, I just want to make sure I'm hitting these points again. So the plan was last comprehensively updated in 2004. It was, it has, it's been updated several times since then, but they've all just kind of been re-adoptions of that 2004 plan. So this is the first time since then that the master plan is undergoing a comprehensive update. The, this update, it was funded in part through municipal planning grant from the state, and that allowed us to hire Regional Planning Commission to really do a lot of the, a lot of the work on this update. Without them, we wouldn't be here tonight having this, this hearing, I don't think. It'll be, the master plan will be required to be updated again in another eight years. It has an eight-year lifespan at this point. And a lot of the input that we received and a lot of the information that went into this plan came from other documents, other studies that have been done, and input from the city's various boards, authorities, and commissions. So a lot of, a lot of engagement was done to get to where we are in this planning process. So the purpose of the plan is really, the plan is intended to be a kind of a roadmap for future land use and development in the community. Really, it's intended to provide the framework for quality of life, guidance on civic action, how do you, how to spend money, capital planning, things of that nature. So it's really intended to kind of guide the community forward for the future. As I mentioned, this is a, this is, this is a high-level document that's kind of incorporates multiple other planning studies and other efforts that have been occurring over the last five years within the community. So instead of trying to identify new policies and new goals and new actions, we incorporated those studies, which really get into the finer detail of the community. So the Transportation Master Plan, the Housing Needs Assessment, the Parking Plan, things like that are really set for the basis of this document. The plan was developed, it's organized around the city's, the city's vision, the strategic vision statement that's behind you is really kind of the basis for how we established the content of the plan. And again, input from the various commissions and other bodies, and drafting of the plan from the Regional Planning Commission, through, working through the Planning Commission moving forward. So the, back in, I believe in June, we really started the update process very aggressively, meeting twice a month with the Planning Commission, working through each section of the plan to get to where we are today. So I mentioned it's organized, this, this master plan is organized, organized around the vision statement. We did alter the strategic vision statement a little bit in two areas, in the economic vitality and in housing. So the vision statements that are on the screen are what's included in the master plan. So the change to the economic vitality is the strategic vision that's behind you includes the phrasing "with a small-town feel" after long-term vibrancy. So the Planning Commission had a lot of discussion about, about that and felt that they struggled with that a lot. So they wanted to just leave it at, at the long-term vibrancy. So that was the one change in that component. And then in the housing, they changed some of the wording around a bit. The, the current vision statement for housing reads, "Ensure a mix of quality, affordable housing stock that maintains the character and aesthetics of our neighborhoods." That was amended to, to read as it's, as it is on the screen there. "Ensure a mix of quality housing that maintains and enhances Winuski's unique sense of place and supports the needs of the entire community." So it still is, is in the same, in the same theme as the current vision statement, but the Planning Commission spent a lot of time, a lot of time discussing this because they felt that the, the update, or this, this new language better represents the direction forward. So they, they did tweak it a little bit. And if the Chair of the Planning Commission was here, he could, he could elaborate on that a bit.
Can I jump in on that for a minute? And Hal and Christine, if you have comments to add. I think it's important to note that at last year's priority setting session between the council and the leadership team, there was discussion about the strategic vision and whether we wordsmith the strategic vision areas in the room at that strategy session. And the decision was made then to ask the Planning Commission to take a look at the language and make a recommendation as part of the master plan, not have the council do it in advance of that master planning process. So it was something that, so looking at this and making sure it was still, this statement from 2015 was still current with our values today, was something that the council specifically asked the Planning Commission to do as part of this master planning process.
So the plan itself, state statute requires specific items to be included. There's 12, there's 12 elements that are required of a, of a master plan. There's 13 items listed here. The last item, Current Analysis and Data, is included as one of those requirements. But if there's, if there's no current data, there's really nothing to update. A lot of times, we rely on census data, which gets updated fully every 10 years, but with some of their intermediate updates through the American Community Survey, sometimes the data's good, sometimes it's not. So it's, if there is good data, we will use it, but it's not, not always, not always the best, except for those 10-year, 10-year census timestamps. Additionally, oh, sorry. So here's a kind of a crosswalk of how each of those elements aligns with the strategic vision areas that we've included in the plan. I realize it's a little difficult to read, but they are all included somewhere in the plan. Additionally, there are 14, 14 goals that the state statute outlines that should be included in a municipal plan, in a master plan. The goals are not a requirement of state statute. However, if a municipality wants to get regional approval of their plan, regional approval through the Regional Planning Commission, then these goals need to be included in a master plan. So we are seeking that regional approval because it allows us to gain access to state funding, to other state programs. So it is, it is kind of an important piece, so we are seeking that. And we are consistent with the, with the state's goals. And here again is the crosswalk of where the, where the plan aligns with all the state goals.
Oh, Mike, come on up.
You guys are quick.
Come on up and join us, if you don't mind.
If you don't mind, I don't mind.
So if you don't know, Mike O'Brien is the Chair of the Planning Commission.
And I figured it'd be 6:30 before you got to this.
We're on time this time.
We're here, it's pretty awesome.
Madam Mayor, you are ready. It's good to see someone up top.
So a few, a few items in this plan that are new, that are going to help, help guide some of the direction are, there's, there's information on river corridors, which is a new requirement based on some state guidelines. So we've incorporated language on river corridors. The phosphorus total maximum daily load is really geared to kind of helping with the health of Lake Champlain. So we have language related to the phosphorus TMDL in the plan. And probably the biggest component is the enhanced energy planning. This is a voluntary requirement that, voluntary requirement. This is a voluntary component that if municipalities choose, they can, they can include specific information related to energy that will give them substantial deference in front of the Public Utility Commission. So we chose to include this language as an appendix in our plan so that if projects come forward related to, to energy development, we can, we can have more stand, more standing and more say in that process. And really what that looks like, so the enhanced energy planning, like I said, gives more influence before the Public Utility Commission. There's, there's a lot of information specifically related to heating, electricity, and transportation, energy needs and, and energy targets, and how to reduce those, that consumption of energy. It's really geared to meet the state's comprehensive energy plan goals of 90% renewable energy by the year 2050. So that's the direction that it's, that it's geared towards. And we included this, and some of the discussion for including it was because we're already doing a lot of the things that we need to, as a city, to meet those goals. We have very dense development patterns, we have multimodal transportation, we have an electric fleet of vehicles that we use, so we're already doing a lot of these actions. So it just seemed like a natural step to include the enhanced energy planning in this document. Public engagement, this was another big part of the plan. As among the various items, all of our Planning Commission meetings were, were open to the public, and we met regularly, like I mentioned, every, twice a month, we met. There was postings on Front Porch Forum and other social media. We participated in the World of Winuski. Regina and I were interviewed. We attended the farmer's market, the Festival of the Pumpkins, the Halloween event. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, and the council held a public hearing back in February as well for public comments. We, we also had an open public comment period that ran from November through December, early, early November through, through the end of December to solicit public comments, which we did get about 40 or, 40 or 50 comments that we incorporated into the document as well. So, let's see. So yeah, so there's a lot of editorial comments that came in, which we addressed. The RPC and their Planning Advisory Committee provided comments as well. And I don't know, Regina, if you want to talk a little bit about that, since?
Sure, yeah. Just to give a little bit of background in terms of how CCRPC does their plan review side of things. So we have a Planning Advisory Committee that's made up of mostly planning staff from all of the municipalities in the, in the county. And they do the plan review on behalf of the board, and they make a recommendation to the board ultimately for these plans, whether to approve them or, or not. We've had that process in place for probably more than five years now, I think, and it really creates a great peer review amongst the planners in trying to get these comprehensive plans to a better place altogether. And really allows for some coordination amongst municipalities as well. So they had some great feedback on the plan, and the Planning Commission incorporated those comments that they had. And from this point on, essentially at the CCRPC, once the city adopts it, then it goes to our full board. They take that recommendation from the Planning Advisory Committee and then follow up on their approval of it.
Mike, you don't have anything?
Not really. Again, sorry I was late. No, I think we, we did take the input. There was something I remember that we pushed back on, Planning Advisory Committee. Forget what it was, it wasn't a big deal. But anyway, we incorporated that, we got all the public comments. As Regina said, if you're not aware, I mean, this was a three or four-year process to get this thing to where it is right now. There was a lot of different folks on the Planning Commission over those three or four years. So we had a lot of, quite, I say a lot of input. We got, one thing we did is we, excuse me, we got input from the different commissions in the city. So Public Works Commission, Public Safety Commission, Planning Commission, Housing Commission. What is it?
Community Services.
Community Services Commission? Sorry, Ray. So there was a lot of input in developing this plan.
And then the last point on this is we, we started with a rough draft and then kind of polished the whole thing to match with the, with the city's current branding and style guides. So I think that's, that's kind of an exciting piece of all of this as well. And a lot of that was done in an effort to not only match, but to make the, the plan easier for the community to digest and really, really engage with it and make it more, more of a useful document. It was kind of the intent of what we were trying to do going forward with some of the stylistic components of it. And that's going to be reflected in the next few slides. And in your agenda packet was a little bit more detail on, on this next part, which is kind of the summaries of all the goals and objectives from each, from each section. So I just have a few of those slides here to run through for folks to see. And we kind of, we tried to lay this out as graphically as we could to try to identify kind of the higher-level goals from goals and objectives for each of the strategic vision areas. And in some cases, there, they will overlap. So for example, and I'm going to not remember which section it is, but in, in, I believe in the land use section, we talk about maintaining and establishing a more, a more dense urban forest, urban canopy. And then we also talk about that in the infrastructure section. So there's a lot of cross, cross-goal and cross-objective identification that kind of helps sync the various sections together. So these, like I said, these are just quick snaps of each of the sections to kind of get a sense of what it looks like and what information is included. But again, they're really intended to be more the higher-level goal and objective statements. And then the detail that's going to support these statements is included in those various other studies and other, other documents. So municipal infrastructure, safe, healthy, connecting people, and then housing.
And I'll just point out, I don't know if it helps to understand the... And I'll just point out, I don't know if it helps to understand the format of the plan, but on these pages, you'll see probably better in front of you than up here on the screen, but the other reference documents are right on the top, and so the intent is that this is gonna live online, and those will all be live hyperlinks, so you can click directly to get much more detail in the, for the actions and everything else that comes out of each of those more specific plans.
So, the next steps in the process, or I guess how this kind of proceeded through, is the Planning Commission reviewed and approved the plan back in January, that was following their public hearing process and also development of the plan. So, the plan was forwarded to council on January tenth. Council reviewed and scheduled the two public hearings, the first of which was held in February, and the second one, which is being held tonight. And then the next step, the final step, is adoption by sometime in April, or sooner. Tonight would be great, too, but you know, whenever, April twenty-first is the deadline of the expiration of our current plan, so that's kind of the date that we're shooting for moving forward. Again, first hearing was on the fifteenth, oh, sorry, on the nineteenth of February with council. No, we did not have any comments from that meeting, so there was nothing to amend or change. And I guess I should also point out that the plan, the version that was forwarded from the Planning Commission is still the same version that we've had going forward. There hasn't been any comments since Planning Commission forwarded the document to council that we've needed to incorporate coming forward. So, second hearing is tonight, which we're obviously having. And then from there, as I mentioned, adoption on or before April twenty-first. So, that's what we have.
RPC after that.
Oh, yeah, and then to the Regional Planning Commission for approval, once municipal approval occurs. So, I'll pause there for any questions or comments at this point. There were some comments that were received via email the other day that I wanted to touch upon, but I believe you all received a copy of, so.
That was my question, I prefer to talk about that email.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, if I can do that now, or?
By all means, yeah.
Okay, great. So, an email was received on, looks like this past weekend, an email was received with several comments, two comments related to the timeline that's included in the front of the document, and I believe that was included in the packet that was in your agenda, that, one, the first comment was related to identification of when CCB, yeah, when CCB was established in Winuski. The other one was adding additional language to the TIF expiration, about that it will also, those monies will also go to the state education fund. And then there was a third comment about the housing, where there was a, the comment was that there was some surprise that there was not a statement promoting home ownership. And I guess, to address the comments, I think, the, or at least in my opinion, from the timeline comments, you know, we included some high points in the timeline of the plan more as just to showcase some highlights, not to be an exhaustive list of everything that's happened in the city. So, I mean, that's, I think, we could add those, I don't know if it's necessary, but they could be added if that was the preference of council. Regarding the housing comment, however, I think the plan, I think the plan does a good job of identifying homeownership. There's a section actually in the plan related to homeownership. In the housing section, there's a lot of discussion of it. We also reference back to the Housing Needs Assessment, which does discuss homeownership and has some recommendations for homeownership. I think also, some of the actions that council has taken with establishment of the Housing Trust Fund helps to support that homeownership component, depending on how those funds will be allocated. So, I think we're addressing homeownership already, so I don't feel that it needs to be addressed in any more detail in this document, anyway. I think we're already going down that road in other ways. So, but those would be my thoughts on those comments, but that's really your decision of how to move forward.
Mike, do you?
I haven't seen the comments, so I would not copy that.
Sorry about that.
You have to excuse me.
On the bottom there, the ABC.
Yeah, I see it, so.
And if I can interject while I give Mike a map a little to give Mike a read. I think it is very possible that the comments received were in reaction to the summary documents that were linked on the agenda, and not the whole document that has this homeownership section in it. So I think that a solution might, if the council wanted to address that in the summary pages, we could, or just to highlight that chapter within the full document more.
So, on CCB, I'm not sure what he's getting at, if it's when they built the new facility or when they first were established here, because if I remember right, they were in the Champlain Mill before they moved into their new facility. So I don't know what, I think the intent here was to show when their facility was built.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah.
It's a landmark, right? Now, I mean, there's a couple landmarks I want to mention on the timeline or the history, too, that I'm kind of, I like to see as, as you know, I'm a big pool, a pro pool, so the pool wasn't on that timeline, and Winuski has a public pool, and only Essex has a public pool, so there's no other public pool in the area. The CCB building's a landmark now, I think that should have been mentioned, or highlighted a little bit, on the timeline or the history, anyway.
The original pool is on the timeline.
Oh, did I miss it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's part of a whole, it's in the nineteen sixty-seven piece of it from the Model Cities Program.
Yeah, build a public pool, well, thank you very much. But again, as Eric said, we could have made this a huge section, we tried to just hit some highlights.
So, I was more curious, just if you would reinforce that, you know, the homeownership piece has been addressed to the desire of the Planning Commission?
And yes, it has, and that actually has been a big discussion through not only this process, but when we did the zoning rewrite as well, there was a whole discussion about homeownership versus, you know, non-owner occupied properties. Certainly, certainly, there is a concern that's aired in meetings that we have too much rental property, and what's the right balance, and keeping single-family homes as single-family homes, or converting duplexes back to duplexes. The biggest problem is state law allows a single-family homeowner to put in an accessory apartment by right, so you can't stop that from happening, and then you get into the issue of how do you enforce, if I put an accessory dwelling unit into my house, I sell it to Eric, and he decides to rent it as two units, how do you enforce that? So, there's issues, but there was a huge discussion about trying to maintain our single-family ownership homes, you know, and we tried to do the best we could with what we had to work with.
Thank you.
So it certainly is incorporated in here, and I believe the Housing Commission, there you are.
The Housing Commission, they're working on the Housing Trust Fund policy, and they have come out with wanting to put a large portion of that fund directly towards homeownership opportunities, so that does align with what we're talking about here.
Yeah, and then to reiterate, this document doesn't tell us the exact steps to take, this is the higher-level vision.
Right, that's a good point. This is up here, and then zoning has to fit into it, so that's what we're trying to do, so we recognize we had the new zoning, we kind of had to do it, we did it a little bit backwards, but that's okay. But zoning has to be consistent with the municipal plan, and I believe it is, as far as I know.
Yep.
Are there any other questions, for those of you who have only recently been exposed to this? Any other questions or areas of concern that you wanna flag?
I just have a comment. I want to appreciate the Chair of the Planning Commission, you, Mike O'Brien. You know, this has been a long haul, and really appreciate your leadership, and leading the team through the process, because I think we have an excellent, you know, plan going forward, so I want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Hal, and, I mean, I've gotta say that I started on the Planning Commission in two thousand fifteen, and Tommy Murray was the chairperson at that time, and that started the process, so, yeah, I mean, it's great to be the chair and get all the credit, but I sit there and go, I mean, that's the reality of it. So, everyone on the Planning Commission, and like I said, started with Tommy as the chairperson, and as I said, there had to have been, well, you don't know Eric, you're new to this, too. We had at least two zoning administrators on this, and we probably have had at least ten or twelve members of the Planning Commission who put input into this. In addition to Housing Commission, Community Services Commission, Public Works Commission, Public Service Commission, what am I missing? Economic Strategy, whatever you call yourself. Heather. You know, so, I mean, it really, you know, when we started the commission system, six years ago, whatever it was, to get more input, this really, really emphasizes how important that was, and how well it is working, that all these people are able to give input. And we had meetings with each commission, talked about what their goals are, and we tried to kind of winnow that down into what you see in this plan, so. Thank you, Hal, I appreciate those words, but I do wanna push any compliments over to the entire Planning Commission.
I'll just second what Hal was saying, I think the document is really easy to understand, I appreciate all the background information, the branding, the iconography of it is really helpful also, so just, you know, job well done.
I should add, too, that, you know, when Eric came on board, he really got us to the finish line, so kudos to Eric, too, and can't miss Regina, who suffered through this for five years, dealing with the Planning Commission at basically every meeting, so thank you both, too.
I had a hiatus for a while.
Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission is very helpful to us in many ways. Happy to have you around.
I do, I did want to ask a little, so I would also like a third or fourth, or kind of pile on on the compliments, I do think this plan was actually a pleasure to read, and I really enjoyed the way that it's put together.
I'm sure it was a pleasure to read.
I really enjoyed it, because it was listed, and then the supporting documentation was there, and clicking through to find those plans, and being able to read more detail at each of those steps without having to scroll through endless pages of it was, I think, a really good choice, and I'm really appreciative of that. I also did click through onto a couple of these pieces, and I have one question on the energy plan, because you touched on it a little bit, and right at the beginning, the goals are very specific and ambitious in terms of the energy efficiency goals for the city to meet within the next year, or actually four years ago, or the next fifteen years. So, I guess I'm kind of curious, because the overview that you gave was really around, this gives us standing in the Public Utility Commission to have a better say in public inciting of renewable resource energy development. How do you see the goals articulated there, around twenty-five percent weatherization? Like, are those really, they're really specific goals for a high-level document and a plan, are those achievable here in Winuski, and kind of what's the kind of history of that development of that document that came up with those goals?
Yeah, why don't you take this, I've been over the RPC game long enough.
So, for about three years now, the Regional Planning Commissions have been helping the state take these high-level state goals and bring them down to the municipal level. And the initial impetus of doing that was to give the municipalities more say in the Public Utility Commission hearings. And so, this is a little bit more of an issue in the town's Northeast Kingdom, and a couple of other places that are seeing big wind happen, and super-large solar farms, and really struggling with whether they should have a say, whether there's, should be a little bit more local public input into that. And the state legislature agreed, so long as the municipalities were agreeing to sort of align themselves with those, no doubt, very aggressive state goals towards more renewable energy and weatherization, and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. The standards for actually aligning with those goals are, they do have some wiggle room. The idea is that everybody is trying to take better steps, is trying to work towards that, but the whole system is pretty aware that those are pretty aggressive goals, and a lot of it, in terms of meeting those goals, are out of the hands of the local municipalities. As an example, this is the state's energy goals, but they are also, sorry, giving certificates of public good for gas line extensions as well. So, there's a lot of things that need to be worked out, but I think the really great benefit is that now we've got lots more municipalities sort of, you know, doing what they can to do better in terms of energy, renewable energies, as well as reduction of energy. And so, I think we're in a good place, but you asked this similar question that we're hearing from pretty much every municipality that are going through this process. And the planning is really built on some models, they're really sort of like looking through a glass ball and figuring out how to tell the future, and we don't really know exactly how it's all gonna work out, but in this initial phase, we're taking a couple steps, I think with every plan iteration, we'll kind of go back to the data, see where we are, see what else we can do to further meet the goals.
And I would just add to that, I think a lot of the information that shows up in that energy plan is all, it's fairly prescribed from the state. So, in order to get that, to meet their, to meet the energy planning goals, we have to include a lot of really detailed information, and the state's really telling us what it is that we need to have. So, you know, a lot of the tables that talk about the specific efficiency reductions for vehicles over the next, you know, however many years, is probably something we wouldn't normally include in a plan like this, because that is really detailed, but it's really coming from, direction from the state on how we craft that document.
Thanks.
Other questions from council before we open it to you, public?
Can I?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask a question, a clarification, do we have another opportunity to discuss and comment after the public?
Yes, we do, yeah. Did you want?
Yeah, and this may be more of a question for the city staff, but one of the things that I noticed when we were, when I was reading through the visioning document, is that some of these items have kind of already been accomplished, so is there any ongoing master list that this could link to, so that the public could know kind of the status of each of those visions?
That's a really great question. So, in terms of the master plan, one of the components that we have to include is an implementation program, and part of that includes a check-in at least every four years from the Regional Planning Commission to see how we're doing. So, the intent, from my perspective, anyway, as staff, is to try to track as much as possible annually, how we are doing with meeting the objectives we've outlined in the plan, so that we, when the RPC comes in to do that four-year check-in, we have something we can show to them, but also so that we can report out to the community as well, to show how we're progressing with implementing our plan.
And just to add to that, I think one of the advantages of this plan and having a strong strategic vision statement and aligning the two, and then aligning the shared work plan between the council and staff, is those regular check-ins, a series of prioritization discussions, will be a communications tool to the public as well about, you know, what we have accomplished, what we're prioritizing for this year, and then what are we prioritizing for future years. Later on in this meeting, I think we're also gonna talk about, a little start a conversation about how we align the commission's work to that, so I think there will be a series of different kind of reporting mechanisms that you'll receive and the public will receive about our status towards achieving this plan. It was certainly always the intent, I think, of the Planning Commission and council leadership, that this not be a document that sits on a shelf, but a very active document that we use to actually... that we use to actually make decisions and guide staff's work, the commission's work, and the council's work ultimately.
So I'd like to open it to the public for questions or comments about the master plan. And if you could please state your name before you speak.
I'm Elaine Etheridge. Yeah, I'm the communications and health manager for Winuski Partnership Prevention. And Steffi is one of our youth board members. And we just wanted to make a few comments, make a few comments on the master plan. We mainly wanted to thank the planning commission and everyone involved, regional planning and the city council for including language about substance prevention, including the paragraph about our organization and the goals that we're working toward. And I'm just going to kind of read it. The Winuski Partnership Prevention works on substance abuse prevention for education policy and data sharing. As an example, they work to assist the community in reducing the amount of youth-targeted alcohol and tobacco messages, and thus reduce youth conception of these substances. There may be a role for the city, either through zoning regulations or liquor licensing to help limit alcohol and tobacco advertising to youth. And so, we're particularly interested and excited about the inclusion of the last sentence, because as you know, or may not, advertising and promotional activities by tobacco companies have been shown to cause the onset continuation of smoking among adolescents and adults. Just a little bit of data, almost two-thirds of adolescents in the U.S. report seeing tobacco advertising all or most of the time when they visit convenience stores that do or do not sell gas. And about one-third of adolescents shop in convenience stores two or three times a week, and seventy percent shop in them at least weekly. So, in Winuski specifically, almost fifty percent of students report seeing advertisements for tobacco and alcohol, most of the time or always. And there are three convenience stores on the way up from Winuski Circle to school. So if that's where they're shopping, then they're seeing them. So, research shows that placing restrictions on tobacco advertising and promotions at the point of sale are really effective strategies for counteracting the industry's efforts to attract new current and recently quit smokers. And so, currently, the Winuski partnerships and the bits of survey, Winuski residents, employers, employees, and what they think about alcohol and tobacco advertising. I was at the polling place on the fifth doing that. We don't have final results yet, we're hoping for about two hundred responses. But so far, many people believe that establishments should have the right to advertise, but are mixed on where they should be allowed to, so it'll be interesting to see where that ends up. But the majority of people said that they would like to see less advertising for both tobacco and alcohol. And so, we're really interested in opening the conversation up to community members and residents to ask what level of advertisements and promotional materials for substances we want to see in our city, and then work with the city to establish a policy perhaps limiting the amount and/or location of advertising. So we understand that this is an ongoing conversation, but we're really excited to get started and have it be included in the plan. And we'll definitely keep you guys up to date on the results of our survey. And hopefully, schedule sometime in the future, press with the planning commission, discuss what a policy could look like. And Steffi just wanted to make a few comments from her perspective on advertising and e-cigarettes.
I just want to tell you guys why there should be more advertising, why Juul and nicotine are, and e-cigarettes are not good for teens, since that Juul pod contains twenty cigarettes worth of both nicotine and alter cells function. And I, from my experience, I've seen a lot of teens using it, and they, they advertise it themselves through social media, like in Snapchat, they will take themselves using Juuls and other, and other e-cigarettes, and they will think it is good. And as a result, from the truth initiative study, it shows that users between fifteen and twenty-four years old do not know that the product contains nicotine. They are unaware of, of the chemicals inside of it, which is very addictive. And I just want to say that, I just, I recently talked to my friend before coming here and telling her why I came here to talk about Juuls and advertising, and she was unaware of that. She said, "Why should I learn about it? I'm never going to use it." But it's bad for her, and, and the advertising, she could walk in and see the, and the Juul, and she would just take it. She's not aware of that, because people don't really know what nicotine is, and how bad it is for them. And teens always use it as a way to like get out, and they think it's better for them. Once I heard a member of my class having a conversation with a lot of students saying that nicotine is better than smoking, I mean, Juul is better than smoking. And my other classmates were saying, "No, it contains nicotine." And the other person was just like, "Nicotine's not bad for you." And the other student said, "Yes, it is bad for them." And I think all these advertisements saying that it contains nicotine doesn't say what nicotine means. And students are unaware of that. And I think that it is really bad for them, and a lot of teens are using nowadays because they think it's a better way than smoking tobacco and cigarettes.
And then, the only other thing I wanted to bring your attention to, and I have some pamphlets I can just give to you, so I don't have to go on it, but with S-54 at the state level, the only thing that we wanted to mention is that the bill includes, oh, sorry, it's the bill that establishes a system for taxing and regulating marijuana. But it includes language that places the burden on municipalities and residents to pay for and organize ballot questions if they want to be able to restrict retail in their communities. So it sort of establishes a norm that retail would be allowed in cities and towns. And so, we see this as taking away local control. And so, we would be interested in talking to the planning commission and the city council to discuss like, what would, what are possibilities if the city didn't take any action before the bill went into effect, if it does? And then look at different examples of policies, you know, such as maybe restricting retail within a certain distance of the school, or something like that. So, yeah, that's all we have.
Well, thank you for coming to speak and to acknowledge that piece that's in the planning document. It's great to have an organization like yours that's doing some of that research and lived for us. Look forward to speaking with you again in the future.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, would anyone else like to ask questions or share comments on this, on the planning? Yes.
Jack, I'm on three seventy-six North Street. I, first of all, I think it's a really positive thing, it's really exciting to move forward. This is actually my first council meeting, to be honest, I'm a little surprised that I don't want people here. You're used to Berlin, isn't it? But, yeah, so first of all, like, first question on the housing aspect of it. I know there's some talk about accessory dwelling units. I was kind of wondering more, obviously, is an in-demand place to live, and it's very limited in terms of our square footage. Are, are accessory dwelling units seen as a way to kind of, you know, use that infill development and kind of release housing, or a valve for the supply?
I think what, what addresses that is the cottage housing that we put in, which is like an accessory unit. But what I was talking about is, state law says that if you own a single-family house, and Hal or anyone else correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, but my understanding is, state law says if you own a single-family residence, you have a right to put an accessory dwelling unit in there. So we can't stop that.
Is that something we almost go to the verge going forward?
Well, so the accessory dwelling unit, I always look at it as an in-law apartment, so it's meant not as a rental unit, but as, you know, if you were my kid, you'd put me there. And lock the door, and let me out. But the problem is that that's okay for you, but when you sell it, what happens with the next person? They buy a single-family home, and they have a little one-bedroom apartment over on the side. You know, are they going to rent it, or are they going to, you know, give it to their, their parent like, you know, you did for me? You know, so, that's the problem. And so, we talked a lot about limiting uses to single-family only in some of these residential districts, but realize that we can't do that, because you have to allow accessory units. And then, there's a definition of what that is, but again, that sometimes gets stretched.
Yeah, I just want to comment on the, the business development side. I think it's really positive that we're looking to add more employers in the downtown. I think if you look at the live-work-play aspect of things, you can live here and you can play here, but I still think, I would love to be able to work here in Winuski. There's just not a lot of places that are really hiring for, for young professionals. So, I think that's a great thing to focus on.
Thank you.
Why can't we just add to that? You mentioned the downtown, but that's part of why, what the gateway was for too, is to expand the downtown, so.
Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing, hearing none, I would bring it back to the council if there are additional questions or comments that we.
Did I miss the advertising for e-cigarettes? Did she have a, a stat for that? Or it was just tobacco she was talking about? Because she kind of left me, or I wanted to ask her that.
Uh, I don't recall.
You don't recall either?
It could be in the materials that she showed, though.
Yeah, I was looking at it.
It's just e-cigarettes.
It, I think the e-cigarettes are more of a problem for the kids if there's more advertising for them. So I'd be interested in looking into that a little bit. She kind of jumped shit before I got to ask her.
If I could jump in, so I, I think what has to be defined is where does that rest? I think it really rests with the council as opposed to the planning commission and zoning. But I think that's something that has to be dealt with, is, you know, where should that fall? Ultimately, it's going to end up with you folks, but, you know, I'm not sure that zoning is the proper place to put that. It's more of an ordinance, I think, you know?
Yeah, I think folks think about it through potentially the liquor licensing and that role that the city council has. There could be a little bit in both, but I think you're right, it feels a little cleaner that way.
Yeah, it's a little too specific for this.
It's too specific. Specific for the municipal plan, but.
So I just have one other question. I was really glad that you used it as the example, the inclusion of urban forests in the municipal infrastructure, and that that does tie through to other areas of the plan. And I don't want to try and rehash the long discussions that have been had around the vision statement, but I do know that natural resources don't appear in our vision statement at all yet. We have significant investment in natural resources in each of these strategic areas, and much of our natural resource areas are currently to-be-determined land use zones. So I guess I'm curious what the discussion that the, that came to removing or non-including natural resources in our municipal infrastructure, especially given that we have these kind of unplanned areas that are largely our natural resource base?
So, I'm, I'm not sure. Let me address the, the fact that we have, for example, Gilbrook and Cassavant Natural Area out here that are zoned. Cassavant is in the central business district or commercial district. Half of Gilbrook is in the industrial district. Those are conversations that, that, things that we left alone, because they're conversations that are going to have to take place with the larger community. And it's going to be an interesting conversation. It's probably going to be, there's going to be a lot of different opinions on it. And so, we decided to just leave things the way they were right now and not touch it in the municipal plan until we have a chance to have the appropriate community conversation about what we want to do with those areas. Does that answer your question?
That's a great piece of information. I guess I wasn't advocating that we make land use determinations for those. I was more questioning, could we modify the vision statement to incorporate what is actually a significant component of many of these areas around our natural resources? Or do you feel that that shouldn't be in the vision statement at this point?
I think the vision statement was something the council did, so that's, you guys, you know what I mean? We're reflecting the vision statement as it exists today. If you guys want to change the vision statement, go for it, I guess, I don't know.
Well, that, that confuses me a little bit, though, because Eric, you said that you actually did adjust the vision statement as part of the municipal planning process.
Right, yeah, in a couple of areas. I think, I, I don't, let's see, how do I say this? I don't know that it's necessarily, I think updating the vision statement to include natural resources may be appropriate through a larger conversation. I think because it wasn't included now, we weren't looking to include other, we weren't looking to include new areas in the vision statement as we were going forward. We were looking at how the current vision statement related to the goals and objectives that we were identifying for this planning document. That's not to say that future vision statements can't more, more specifically reflect those, those components of natural resources. We do include multiple goals and objectives around natural resources in the plan, so it's, we're not, we're not overlooking it in, in the, in the goal setting, just it's not explicit in the vision statement as, as you've identified. And I think, again, that was because it didn't exist there to begin with. So we weren't looking to alter the vision statement in, in that regard to create a new vision, just kind of tweak what was already there.
Well, there was also a request from the council for the planning commission to look at the language of it and come up with, trying to think specifically what the, what the section was in the language, but we had, I should note, because we talked about three meetings, we discussed the specific language.
Small-town feel.
Small-town feel.
Small-town feel, yeah. So, the council gave us, you know, a request to look at the language and tweak it as we thought fit. And that's why, otherwise, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have done anything to the vision statement.
So, I would add to that, that, yeah, the vision statement precedes it. What's happened here is while they were doing the master plan, they did those language tweaks. I think if we wanted to, as a body, revisit the vision statement in a broader sense, the right time to do that would be when we have that strategy step back in like May, June, when that occurs. So it's something that we can talk about when we're getting into like the bigger priority discussion there. But that's a, I'm glad you called it out, it's not something that I had caught when we did the comparison there. Any other comments or questions? So this is an item that is on for discussion or approval. What I'm hearing, I think is general, I haven't heard any large, any calls for any rule of vision beyond the strategic vision discussion, which we can do later. So with that, and, so we don't have to approve this today, but I would entertain a motion to approve the public hearing on, I'm sorry, to approve the master plan.
So.
Second.
Motion by Hal, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and that also closes our public hearing on the master plan, on the draft 2018 master plan. Thank you again for all of your work.
Thank you very much.
So let's move on to our, back into our regular items on our agenda. Next up, we have Champlain Housing Trust, discharge of mortgage deed.
Hello, I am here tonight with Amy Demetrovitz from Champlain Housing Trust, and she's here to answer any historic questions about some of these. But for the next two agenda items, she'll be here to take questions from you. Yeah, please, Anne, please, Anne.
So Amy is a rock star at Champlain Housing Trust, just received a huge award at their annual meeting for twenty-five years of service, and is very integral in our affordable housing priorities here in Winuski and our potential future OCC project as well. So, we work very closely with Amy, and we're very thankful to have her here. So I'm glad she's here, so you all get to meet her face to face as well.
Thanks. So, for the first agenda item tonight, the Champlain Housing Trust is requesting that the city of Winuski authorize the release and discharge of mortgage deeds on three properties, 194 Hickok Street, 6 and 6 and 1/2 Leclerc Avenue, and 136 Malitz Bay Avenue. The original mortgage federated all three of those properties, but since then, two of those But since then, two of those mortgage deeds have been discharged, and we believe that it is an oversight, that the third wasn't. So we're no longer carrying those loans on our books. And the request here is to give city manager Jesse Baker authority to sign a single mortgage deed discharge that lists all three of those properties, just to clarify the final disposition of those mortgage deeds. Happy to take questions about that. I gave you, I believe, also the original mortgage deed and a copy of the discharge for 6 Leclerc and 6 and 1/2 Leclerc. So obviously, it was paid off to be discharged and we don't have it on our books. We really do think it's just an oversight and paperwork.
Thanks for that clarification.
Amy, can you share with us why you're looking for this? Is that possible to do?
I can certainly, yes. So in fact, this was a loan that was on three co-ops. They were housing co-ops 25, 30 years ago, before my time, and I've been there a long time. The one on Mallett's Bay, 136 Mallett's Bay, we actually transferred that property to Habitat for Humanity and they built an owner occupied duplex. There's two units there. 6 and 1/2 Leclerc, we did some renovations there. It's, it's continuing to be affordable rental housing. And the remaining one is 194 Hickock Street. And we are, that is, there are two units there and we're looking to take down one unit and renovate the remaining unit and have that be a homeownership unit as well. And the folks who had lived there for quite a long time, just as an aside, who moved out into rental housing are actually going to apply to become a purchaser there. So that's a pretty great story.
Yeah, isn't it the case, one of the units is unoccupied anyway?
Yes, so that, those, we would have converted that to homeownership quite a while ago, but there were two long-term tenants there and we didn't want to displace them. When one of them moved out, we saw it as a potential opportunity and then the other household moved. So we have left that empty in anticipation of being able to do this homeownership conversion.
Thank you, and thanks for joining us. Yeah, so it sounds like what you're saying here is, there's no money owed anyway. There's a paperwork error and moving forward can gain us additional homeownership, another single-family home. Like some of that. Are there any questions or concerns from council about this item?
One more thing to add. It's, so this is being brought to you because the authority sits with you to dispose of property or assets. So it's not something that we as staff can solely do. It is something that requires your collective authority.
Any questions or concerns from the public? All right, seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve discharge of mortgage deed for Champlain Housing Trust.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Hal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So our next item is Champlain Housing Trust VCDP loan extension.
Yep, so what we're looking for here is a five-year extension of a loan to Champlain Housing Trust. And this is originally funded through a Vermont Community Development Program funding for affordable rental housing properties at 53 through 67 East Spring Street. The mortgage note is currently due to mature in 2020. We are looking to do a five-year extension of that to 2025. And the Champlain Housing Trust acts as the administrator on that loan and the custodian of the funds. So we actually have no standing or signatory authority in that. But we're looking to extend that in order to work with other affordable housing partners that will also be extending the loan, so it's VHFA funds.
Yes.
So what is the, I'm not clear like what the outcome is, the need for the extension, like what the outcome is that we get out of that?
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, thank you. So the property is actually at 53, 60, 53 through 67 East Spring Street, is owned by a partnership. We're one of, we're the general managing partner. And it includes this property as well as 1306 Ethan Allen Avenue, out at the fort, which is in Colchester. Those two distinct properties are owned by one partnership. The city of Winuski, the predecessor of Champlain Housing Trust, Lake Champlain Housing Development Corporation, managed a rental rehab program on behalf of the city of Winuski and put in a $75,000 VCDP funded loan into this project to help the initial renovation that happened there. We got a similar loan through the town of Colchester for the building out at the fort. Those buildings need renovation and we are working towards a refinancing plan, but we need a little more time. We requested our, the first mortgage holder is the Vermont Housing Finance Agency. And we asked them to change the terms of that original loan, of their first mortgage loan, extend the term, but also reduce the interest rate. We do expect to be pulling the refinance together within the next two years. So we'll likely come back and look for a change of the terms, likely just an extension again, before the five-year term is up. But when we asked the Vermont Housing Finance Agency to extend their term for five years, they need all of the other loans to line up with that same date, end of term. So sorry, that's a long explanation, but unfortunately, these things are very complicated. As a matter of fact, as, as was explained, the loan here is not to the, or from the city of Winuski. It's, in fact, CHT is the signatory where the loan is on our books. And it's been a little confusing to our auditors, so I may in the future come back to ask that we clean that up and have some sort of a grant agreement directly, or at least between the city of Winuski and the Champlain Housing Trust, because that piece has been missing from our, from our financial records. So I'm consulting with the attorney. I'm sorry that I don't have that available right now, but it's been, it needs to get cleaned up in that way as well.
And VCDP funds are community development block grant funds that you might hear about otherwise. Burlington is the only entitlement community in the state and the rest of the communities in the state can apply to the state for those funds. But those applications need to come through a municipality. They can't come through a partner nonprofit entity. So hence why when this organization was first standing up this, this project, they came to us in support of that. And that may happen in the future with another, another project and you'll hear about some CDP applications coming up. But that's why the municipality goes in on those grant applications in partnership.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns from council? Sounds like another paperwork situation.
How, I have a question. How does this impact Winuski? How, how does this impact the city? That's what, if it's not, the loan is in our name? And, but it's not really in our name, so I'm wondering, how does that impact Winuski?
The grant funding came through us.
Okay.
So for us to be on board with it and working with our partner, I think just makes the whole thing work better.
Makes it work better, so there's, there's no.
So that we're continuing a last step in partnership.
There's no penalties or anything that associate with the city, okay.
And there, there's, we can't use this, if they were to repay the loan, we couldn't, it wouldn't be our money to reuse.
Okay.
For something.
And we can't extend the loan without authorization, since we're administering the program on behalf of the city. Even though the note is in our name and it'll be our signature on that extension, we need authorization from the city in order to do that.
I have one more. So is it just the city of Winuski you, you need to get the authorization from, or is there other partners? And what happens if those other partners don't oblige CHD?
For this loan, we just need authorization from the city of Winuski. There's a similar loan with the town of Colchester, and I'm going to be in front of their select board next week to ask for the same extension.
Okay.
And recognizing that the refinancing is two years away probably, does this extension, while you're doing that refinancing, increase the exposure of the property or potential, any potential financial liabilities? Like, does it make it more challenging or potentially burdensome to the property to persist as a partnership? Or is that pretty much equal, whether it's a short, shorter term or a longer term?
It, it very much will benefit the project because, and the property, because the first mortgage loan with VHFA has a, has a high interest rate. And the refinance with them, or the change in terms with VHFA, will improve the cash flow at the property because it'll reduce the interest rate. I should say this loan is a 0% deferred loan. There's no payments being made on this loan that we're talking about with the city of Winuski. So that's not going to change anything materially at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Champlain Housing Trust VCDP loan extension.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hal, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is Main Street Realization Project Final Design Engineering Services Agreement Authorization.
Hi, this is a big one.
Yes, it is.
So we have a small project. So I have Evan Dietrich here from DHB. He's the Transportation Engineering Director.
That's right.
DHB. So Evan's been with the project since the beginning. But tonight, we're, we're looking to authorize city manager to sign the final design ESA for the Main Street project. One other request is that if authorized, we'd also, also like to authorize city to revise the ESA language to address any USDA or DDC additional feedback, which I'll, I'll get into a little later. So the total ESA is $1,539,989.81. So, and that's broken up between three different funds, general fund, sewer fund, and water fund. So just to give an overview, so this is sort of the next step from our concept design plans that are currently available. This will, will provide preliminary engineering plans, and then we'd be moving into final engineering plans for the entire length of the project, the 4,000 linear feet from the New England Railroad Bridge all the way up to Colchester Line. And it's for all phases of work, so it's water resources, streetscape, roadway, landscaping, and underground utilities. So regarding the authorization to revise ESA language, so we have, you know, we've been working on this since mid-September. It's a big proposal, so it's taken us a long time to kind of get here and get it in front of the council, but we have USDA and DDC as funding partners now. So those folks have to review the ESA as well, so that's taken some time. We've had the government shutdown issue, unfortunately, that's, that pushed the schedule a little bit for us. But at this point, we're, we're sort of finally on the same page as far as scope of work and, you know, the legalese within the agreement itself. We may see some small tweaks in the language once some other DDC folks review it. So that's why we're requesting, you know, if, if some of those sort of legal agreement comments regarding, you know, indemnifications, things like that, that we're allowed to kind of make those revisions. So no revisions, you know, regarding scope and fee, but we may have a couple tweaks as we go through more layers with the DDC. So that's kind of the agreement piece. And I guess I'll pause there if there's any questions on the agreement itself. It's a big agreement.
Yeah, and I think I have a question about that. This is going to be the final engineering design, so what we see on paper is going to go off the bid.
Correct.
Not quite accurate, right?
No, how's, what's, because we're new, I need to understand this. Because some of the designs I've seen, I was trying to figure out parking, so to speak, on Main Street, how we're giving up some for green, for green spaces and then, and we want all, you know, we want commercial spacing down Main Street or east Downing Street, and how? I guess I don't know if we need to revisit that.
So stepping back a little bit for background, and correct me if I misspeak, but with this project, previous council has discussed a phased approach. So where we were at before is that we are going to move forward with the infrastructure and underground, you know, the water and sewer and the road as one, as a first phase, and then come back to the second phase based on additional funding. And so I would have two comments there. One is that the way we're approaching this engineering, you know, the way that we approach the pool, for example, where we're dependent on funding, we're saying like, we are engineering this in such a way that we can pull pieces out if need be. So are we putting ourselves in a position here where if we do decide that we need to phase this in a certain way, we can do, the engineering will support that, or are we paying for full engineering that we cannot make adjustments to if needed?
Yeah, sure, so they address both those. So as we move into sort of preliminary design, the idea is we would progress all scope of work. So water resources, streetscape. At the end of that sort of preliminary design, we'd kind of press pause, especially on the streetscape portion, and really focus on the water resources phase of work. Because that's where, you know, we're looking at USDA funding, we have a five-year timeframe to really get that, that piece of the project done first. And that sort of project, and we move into final design with the water resources piece, trying to progress the bid documents. And we would get to, say, bid documents and then we would be talking to the council on saying like, okay, do we, do we want to do the full water resource project the whole length? Do we want to phase it to just do, you know, a portion this summer, a portion next summer? Are there developments along the corridor that we want to, that are lining up, that we want to coordinate some work with them? And that final design piece is where we, you know, be talking about, how are we certain, how are we going to bid this project where it makes the most sense? So, and to answer your question, there's, there's still a lot of room for how we break up that 66-foot right-of-way corridor. So, you know, in concept plans, we have identified, based on the community feedback, you know, we want parking, but we want to also accommodate an uphill bike lane. The trade-off is, we're going to do potentially a, a share-o, shared bike lane and the driveline down. There's still a lot of room to kind of, how do we, how do we cut out that 66-foot right-of-way, accommodate all modes, accommodate wider streetscape? Because we are only at, you know, concept level plans right now. We still have a long ways to go to sort of get to that final design phase.
Because that's, that's what worries me about trying to rent commercial space out and not have any parking for those commercial spaces. I mean, we've kind of seen that on the road a little bit when it first, when Hawking, where that Hawking building came around. It took a long time for those rental spaces to come out, because there's no, there's no parking around them for street-side parking. And that's what concerns me about trying to make sure those buildings get utilized fully. And then I've, I've seen some of those concept drawings with bump outs, and I'm not sure if that would work in, in Winuski. And like I said, being new under the council, trying to figure out these, before we go and spend all this money and not be able to take certain aspects out or put aspects in. And I think that's a real, that should be a concern for any person thinking about coming here to build or rent space for business aspects.
Yeah, and so similar to other projects, what, what we would end up doing is, you know, at the end of preliminary design, come to the council, this is an update of where we're at, solicit feedback, you know, and if you want to run it through Public Works Commission, Planning Commission to get additional feedback, same thing. And then we go back to the drawing board, incorporate that into, say, a final design package, come back again and say, you know, here's what we have for final design, what do you think? And that's when we get in discussions for, okay, let's start strategizing how we want to bid the project, you know, for potentially summer, summer 2020 construction. So you'll, I guess bottom line, you'll see the project. So you'll, I guess bottom line, you'll see the project and have feedback and drive some of those, you know, design elements.
Is this funding for just preliminary design or for a complete design?
So this will go basically all the way up to bid documents. So this will get us to a package that we can put on the street and put out to bid. It will give us the permits to put it out to bid, and it'll give us updated cost estimates, you know, for preliminary design and final design. So it's basically a package that's ready that we could put out to street to contractors.
Can I say something about this? And correct me if I'm wrong, not an engineer. I think one of, one of the reasons we are doing this all together as all, all phases in essentially, is to, there are so many things to coordinate in the ground between the water, wastewater, stormwater, underground utilities, and the streetscape, and how narrow the road's going to be, and where the side what's going to sit versus the green belt. You really, the plant, the engineering for that all needs to happen at once to take each other into consideration. Once that happens, though, there's nothing to say we have to move forward with a phase of it. So we can engineer it, and then decide to move forward with the water phase, we can preliminary engineer all of it, then decide to move, and know where things are going, and then decide to move forward with final engineering for a piece of it, and put the preliminary engineering of the streetscape in a second phase, but knowing that both are taken into consideration. And engineering like that doesn't really go old, it's not like a cost estimate that can go old as, as the,
Design is design.
Right, as the economy changes.
If we're doing the second phase like that, well, Jesse, we're already paying for that design now, so is it going to cost more money to do that second phase of design? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Second phase, the, are you saying the final?
For the final streetscape. No, we're paying for it now, and we want to, no.
So this isn't a down payment, this is just a contract of as, we will pay these rates for this work as we get to them.
So we're basically contracting for the services to get us through preliminary and final design, pending rounds of feedback from council as we go.
Yeah, yeah, and I will say, so the mayor pointed out too, that the way we've modeled the financials for this project is a phased approach right now, because on the general fund side, that's where we, we have some issues trying to get that budget to work. So we're, we really, we phase it to get to that TIF expiration date, because that's, we've modeled some of that TIF funding to pay for the streetscape. So as Jesse mentioned too, we have to kind of design the whole project, because there's, you know, for example, in the street, you know, we'll do water sewer, but there's places where we have to bury, say, telecom across the street to make connections. So we have to kind of know that whole design in order to, you know, put those, you know, pieces in that, that makes sense to do now. So we're not digging up the street like a couple years later after we've done.
It's all brand new.
So we want, it's kind of like a master plan, we need to know the entire corridor master plan so that we're sort of putting those pieces in appropriately.
Can you talk about the timeline?
So ideally, Evan, ideally our target is to start construction next summer with those water resources pieces. And that's mainly to maintain the schedule of USDA for the funding.
And just to be clear, next summer is twenty twenty, not this coming summer.
Yeah, correct, no. No, we're not there. I think with preliminary design, where are we looking at? The final design winner?
Right, the idea would be to get through this preliminary design phase of all the parts of the project this calendar year and perhaps as late as late summer or fall, be done with that, then do the pause, as John said, and then decide where we want to go from there about what it is we want to get built next summer. But the goal would be to get something built starting in twenty twenty's construction season.
And sorry, when would you have to finish final design in order to start, to have things out to bid in time for summer twenty twenty start?
Well, ideally, you'd like to bid, you know, around this time of the year, or maybe a little earlier, right? Right before all the contractors start to mobilize and get their work ready, they're bidding over late winter period. So ideally, that first piece at least, the final design is done around this time next year, so that you can get construction bids at this time a year from now.
So I would just like to say as some background, and I think Jesse mentioned this before, that it's a project we voted on many times, and we will keep voting on. So there is, like you guys are stepping in to continue work that's already been started. But I wanted to acknowledge that for three of us up here, it's like a huge project with a lot of new information to it. And we are, like we are right now, talking about committing a significant amount of money at one point to keep the ball rolling forward. To John's point, like we have more opportunities to weigh in on this and, you know, keep learning about it, but I do want to acknowledge that. Like, any questions that you have right now or concerns or anything are more than welcome.
I was remembering back, it's kind of not here nor there, but that this meeting last year, when it was your first two meetings, we were making the decision of whether to go out to bond for this project. And you were brand new on the council, being like, so, twenty-three million dollars, what do you think? So, and you guys asked great questions, and as I remember that, it was, it was new sets of eyes, new perspective on, on things that we're in the weeds on is super helpful.
Weed? I'm just, what I want to see with all this work is the one point five million, is it not? We have to go backwards and start over on something and cost the city more money? I think this is a huge amount of money, and I just, from some of the background, from the background I've heard from some of the residents, it's a streetscape that was my main concern. I think the utility portion of it is, it's a done deal, and that's going to make it look really nice. And I understand, I'm starting to get the picture now that you have to do all of it at once. I'm just concerned that if we have to start tweaking it, it's going to start costing taxpayers more money, and that's my next question.
And it's, it's a big proposal. Yeah, and I will say, we're cognizant that, you know, even over the life of this project, things may change. So what we're trying to set up is, okay, we bring the curb lines in to accommodate sort of the form-based code zoning to give those building frontages some space. We're not necessarily putting in like, say, protected bike lanes or something like that. So what we're installing is mainly striping. I mean, there will be bump outs and things to accommodate pedestrian crossings, like mid-block crossings, but within that right-of-way, or, you know, we can pretty much, you know, if we want to change a bike lane to parking, or change parking to a bike lane, like, we can do that with paint. So we're trying to build that, those kind of revisions, and so who knows what the transportation network's going to look like, you know, twenty, fifty years from now.
And, well, the other thing too, is this Main Street, is this going to tie into the underpass too for Colchester with the sidewalks? Because I know that's on appeal right now, so how's that all fitting together with this study of, or this engineering as well?
So it is, I'll let Evan, because you may have had more discussion.
Yeah, we've been, we've been talking with VTran, of course, the Exit sixteen is a big project, right? And they're, they have all kinds of plans to do stuff there. So we've been talking to the VTran's project manager about what their plan is for that. And right now, the project's blending together perfectly fine, it'll be seamless to go right through. If they don't build theirs, actually, at this end, the Wunuski end, there isn't too much of a change close to the Colchester line from what's going on now with the interchange reconfiguration, that doesn't really change much. So our project would still mesh into that.
Okay.
One of our big concerns has been traffic control. You know, they may be going to construction potentially the same time we're going to construction. And you can imagine what kind of havoc that's going to rain on traffic in this area. So one of the things that's most important to me anyway, and I've been talking to the VTran's project manager about, is what are we going to do to maintain traffic? You know, you're going to have to warn people on the interstate that Exit sixteen may not be a great option at this time. And that sort of information campaign, in addition to where traffic's going to go and what lanes, and what detours might be in effect, and all that sort of stuff.
I think if the state decides not to move forward with that project for whatever reason, though, although I don't think that's going to happen at this point, I think we would be trying to work with the state in Colchester to at a minimum continue the sidewalk up to Shaw's. That's something we've heard repeatedly, and it's not technically on our property, we don't have say over that, but I think we would be strongly advocating that that, with these improvements, we continue at least some of those streetscape improvements through the underpass.
I agree, because there's a lot of people that walk up that way.
John, do you have any update on underground and cost share negotiations?
We haven't, we're kind of, so as we've been negotiating this agreement, we have had a second round of meetings with all the utility agencies, but it's mainly been on an engineering basis. So the next step with final design is to start those cost share negotiations with sort of the business development folks, and really get into the weeds with the final, once we get into final design, because that's where they'll have a better idea of like what the cost is.
So I was noticing that the original estimate was one point eight five million for engineering, and it looks like you're going to be coming in under that. One, just curious how we got that reduction, and two, do we anticipate that it could, over time, go up to that one point eight five? Or do we really feel strong that it's going to remain the principles that you have now?
So the one point eight was in our, was in VHB's concept plan, and basically a percentage of the construction cost. So it was sort of a rough estimate of, hey, this is, this is what you should budget for. As they got more into the scope of the project, they were able to find it a little bit better, and it's gotten lower, which is always better. So, yeah, we, you know, if, you know, if we move forward, this is a not-to-exceed contract, so without, you know, some kind of change order approval from the council, we couldn't, we couldn't exceed that amount.
So no surprises, in all words?
No surprises unless, well, until we start construction. And there's always surprises, but on the engineering side.
And John, in your memo, you mentioned that you're dedicating city staff time to project development to reduce some of the costs. I didn't see that lined out, could you just give us kind of a high-level overview of what you're taking on as city staff to reduce costs?
Sure, so mainly utility coordination work. So we, we've built that relationship, the city engineers done an amazing job reaching out to the different utilities, and been working through some of the engineering and routing options. So we feel that's something we can take on and kind of reduce the burden from VHB, so they don't have to sit through hours of utility coordination meetings. So that's one way we're trying to, you know, try to keep the proposal lower.
Are there any other questions or comments? Any questions or concerns from the public?
To be determined. Yeah, I mean, so we, our plan is to, to begin water resources construction in twenty twenty, next summer. The streetscape portion, you know, that could be phased, it could go all as one, some of it depends on funding. So that, that one is really, we'll have to, once we get into more design phase, we'll have a better idea of schedule.
Is this construction going to go year-round, or is it a build season? Is it going to happen in the winter, or?
I think it's to be determined.
Yeah, I wouldn't really recommend that we do anything in the winter. Potentially, some undergrounding of utilities could be done during that time, but it's not really ideal. You know, you're working around snowbanks, and there's just, it's just not, it's very slow-going if you try to do it. So probably a winter shutdown.
Any other questions from council?
One. If VTrans, I haven't seen any plans for that, are they going to have a bike path going down rural highway? And would the city consider, or would the engineer consider to incorporate a bike path connected to the Colchester VTrans? Instead of, I don't know if it's a, like, a green belt bike path, or is it going to be a wider sidewalk paved for pedestrians and for bike traffic? Would that be something that we can incorporate or draw up to, or?
So I know the plans, the most recent plans I've seen, they have a multi-use path that cuts through. I think it's eight or ten foot wide, and it kind of melds into our streetscape.
It does now. Initially, I think there's only one as far as the Whitcomb driveway. And we said, well, wait a minute, we have these bike lanes that we want to connect to. So they, in our prior coordination with them, they've amended their plan to show the extension of, I think it's bike lanes that comes from that multi-use path now that will connect to our bike lanes. So we've actively worked with them to make the facility consistent all the way through, so bicyclists will have a place to go.
Yeah, I think the hard part for, for us, I mean, so we do have sixty-six feet to kind of cut up the way we want to. And we've gone through sort of this, we've gone through a public process of, you know, obtaining feedback on what, what the community wants to see for that. It's hard to fit a dedicated bike lane within that sixty-six feet, because it's, you're, you're taking away from something else. So you're taking away from, you know, sidewalk, furniture zone, parking. So I, I don't see that as an option on Main Street. I don't know, I don't believe that was looked at as, as a design option.
Bike lanes both ways?
No, you're saying a multi-use path.
A multi-use path, yeah.
I'm just trying to think of, again, parking, commercial space, even people trying to walk, bike. I mean, there's a lot going on on Main Street, especially if you have a lot of commercial space, that's eventually going to be there.
We looked at that early on, one of the options was to have a multi-use path that would go right up the road off of one of the sides, but it really ate into a large part of the sidewalk, and it reduced some of the parking. And it was not really received well in the public meetings.
No, I don't know what's happening.
You know, the solution that eventually we did come up with, I think, makes a lot of sense. We have the shared lane going downhill, when the bicyclists can go faster and can ride with traffic in the downhill traffic lane. But then uphill, you have a separate dedicated lane for bicyclists. And that's in addition to the sidewalks on both sides. So you have pedestrians off the cartway, you have the bikes going with cars downhill, and then a separate bike lane going uphill.
Well, with parking?
With parking, generally speaking, yes, that's right.
Thank you.
So again, I'm not hearing any great concerns. I would entertain a motion to approve Main Street Realization Final Design Engineering Services Agreement Authorization.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hal, second by Jim. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll put John on the spot and just say, if you guys ever want to learn more about the design.
Yeah.
Loves to dig in.
Please. Yeah, but seriously, if anyone does, yeah, if anyone does want to kind of get a, you know, more of a background on it, feel free, I'm always available.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So next up, we have approval, potential approval Hickok Street Water Main Replacement Final Design Engineering Services Agreement Authorization, and DDC Step Two State Revolving Loan Fund Application Submission Approval.
So this is for final design of the Hickok Street Water Main. So we are looking, So we are looking, this project, we're looking to construct this summer. So we've, we've sort of fast tracked this one to get into final design. Just to give you a, a quick idea of schedule, we are looking to advertise this project in May. Contract award in June and start construction in July. So this proposal would be to get to sort of final design big documents similar to last project. The other piece of this is we are looking to submit the step, it's actually step three financing for the drinking water state revolving loan fund. So that's how we'd be financing this design portion and likely the, the project construction. And the reason we're, just to kind of give you an overview, so SRF, there's, there's three steps that you apply for. So there's a planning step when you're just kind of in concept phase, step two, when you're in sort of this final design phase, and then step three for construction. We're fast tracking the step three because there's a thirty percent construction subsidy available right now. It's first come, first served. So we want to take advantage of that if possible. So that's why we're, we're skipping to step three application and what we're looking to do is get reimbursement of this design phase work within that step three application. So fingers crossed if, if we do get it in and hopefully there's some subsidy funding that'll help support the project cost.
And to clarify, we take this, this loan out and then we pay that back through our, through the water fund, not through.
Yep, correct. So this is all right through our water rate cap reserve fund. So this, this is a budgeted project in our capital plan. And right, so we, the loan typically we, it works with SRF is these design, when you go through final design, you take out a step two, the loan actually rolls into the construction loan and then you, you close on the loan at the end of the project and that's when you sign paperwork and you start paying down the debt.
Thank you. Are there any questions, concerns from council on this item? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing and hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval of Final Design Engineering Services Agreement Authorization and DEC Step Three State Revolving Loan Fund Application Submission Approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So next up, we have Vermont Children's Trust Fund Grant and are you able to join us?
How's everybody doing? So first of a couple items here from Monroe, but we are planning to apply this, applications due Wednesday, but for the Vermont Children's Trust Fund Grant. We are working right now with Recreation, Library and kind of looking at it as a really team-wide project to develop some team programming for youth at the O'Brien Center. We do a lot of partnership work with the school through the twenty-one C grants and they run a lot of great programs up there. We're finding a lot of kids not getting caught by those programs after school and ending up down at the O'Brien Center in sort of unstructured space and time. So trying to use this funding to retain an AmeriCorps position, which is slated to end at the end of this fiscal year and use those hours to develop some kind of pop-up team programming in the space down there. So so that's the, the plan right now. And we did ask, I don't have a specific budget, budget number yet. I'll be honest that we're still developing the final budget details. But it's for up to twenty thousand, so we're working on that. Right now, we're hovering in the like twelve to thirteen thousand dollar range. So I think we will probably be under the max ask. But having worked in this grant program in the past, that ten to twelve thousand dollar number is pretty standard for awards there. And this is a three-year grant program we're applying for. It steps down over those three years. So the hope would be that this would kind of give us some funding to bridge that AmeriCorps position, kind of keep it retained and then we would look for other ways to fund that over the, the next couple of years. So that's the, the plan.
So the kids are already there?
The kids, the kids are there, yeah. And we're in many ways dealing with, you know, trying to provide stuff on the side outside of normally structured programming. So this would be a way for us to have a little bit more resource to play with.
One of my questions was gonna be about staff capacity, but that's right in there. And what, what is the match that we have to offer for this?
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this I don't believe has a match component to it.
Oh, it did not.
I don't believe so.
Oh, so you have NA in the box about match. So that's why it's not required. Okay, great. Questions from council?
You said it's a three-year program and you marked that it's up to twenty thousand dollars in the first year. Do you have to keep applying for additional funds in years after that or do you apply for all three years together?
So you, you have to sort of show outcomes or achieve outcomes in the first year to be eligible for years two and three. So if you get the first year and totally blow it and don't do what you say you're gonna do, then you're not gonna get years two and three. But if you deliver on what you said you're gonna do, get your reports in on time, then you're eligible for that second and third year. There is still a sort of reapplication process, but it's not a competitive process at that point.
So you are proposing all three years of funding at this point and you will only get the first one, but then if you're successful, you'll continue to get the second.
So is that divided if you get, say you apply and get twelve grand for three years, is that four grand each year or is it twelve grand?
Twelve in the first year and then it steps down the subsequent two years. So I, I think it's an eighty percent step down. So I think it goes, make, make the math easy, ten thousand year one, eight thousand year two, and then I'm not gonna try to do the math in my head, but you get the picture. Eighty percent of eight from there.
Any other questions?
Can this support facilities fees or is this purely personnel?
It's gonna be largely personnel. So we are gonna carry a little bit of funding in there for space with Northend Studios. So as folks may know, they're gonna be renting much of the, the space down there and we're setting, working on negotiating agreement with them right now around the number of hours per month the city can use without additional fees. But I'm guessing that this will take us above that number. So we are carrying some funds in the, the budget right now for basically renting back that space from Northend Studios that they're leasing out.
Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Vermont Children's Trust Fund Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by House, second by Mike. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Mayor Pledge for National Recreation and Parks Association Ten Minute Walk Campaign.
So speaking of grants, so this is the large national grant that we received back in January. And at the time Seth had signed on to the campaign, that was a prerequisite for applying to the grant. So we are with the new mayor in the seat here, coming to request that the new mayor signs on to that pledge and kind of keeps us in the program for the Ten Minute Walk Campaign with NRPA. They did include a few bits of data here too that were just some pieces. It's kind of tip of the iceberg, but I think one of the really great parts of this grant program is it's exposing us to a lot of national data sets and tools that we have not been exposed to before through Trust for Public Land and Urban Land Institute. So just a few things here that we received and were kind of exposed to during our training two weeks ago down in Tennessee. But I wanted to share those as kind of a, a first step of some of the stuff that's out there. Definitely would encourage you to check out some of these websites if, if you've got some time. There's some pretty awesome data sets there and it really starts to give us some, some pieces to work with.
Well, I'm happy to keep getting access to free things. Are there any questions from council? Questions, comments from the public? Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Mayor Pledge for National Recreation and Parks Association Ten Minute Walk Campaign. Motion by Amy, second by Jim. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And then you'll stick around for our next item, the Community Services Fee Resolution.
Last but not least, so this is largely process we need to go through due to some charter language that we have that requires all fees to be set by ordinance. So at the time that we redid the ordinances, we left language in here saying that from time to time, we would be back to speak to council about any fees for programs that are not previously established either in ordinance or resolution. So the three programs here are ones that either public speaking, for instance, we've updated the fee slightly or in the other two instances, there are programs that we're running that are new. So periodically, periodically at least until potentially the charter changes, we'll be back here kind of doing this to, to just stay above board with the, the pricing of programs.
So we have those established rates in the, in the charter and then everything else has to come to us as a resolution for approval.
Right, right. So yeah, so chapter twenty-eight of the ordinance has a, a bunch of the fees in it and then there's been I believe two subsequent resolutions that have some additional fees tacked on. So I'm happy to share those if those are not something you guys have at the, I don't think they're on the website. So I'm happy to share those if those resolutions are not at the ready.
And we should just note, in the last update of the fee chapter in January of this year, we did establish a set of other fees that will also be approved by resolution annually with the water rates and waste water rates specifically. So we don't have to go through the whole ordinance adoption process annually to set those rates. You can do that by resolution as council.
Thrive was also included in that at the time.
Any questions or concerns from council on this item?
The rates seem very affordable. Just curious how you got to those numbers?
So in the, in the instances where we're working with private instructors, we sort of have a conversation with that person to say, you know, you're coming in, providing your services, what are you looking to make on a program? In some cases, we'll charge a slight rate above that as a revenue source for, for the department or to cover back some of the space costs. But by and large, we're, we're working with those instructors to set those costs. We're, I think baseline, just trying to keep programs really affordable and, and not trying to mark, you know, price ourselves out of participation. So, so far, so good. And that sort of thirty-five to forty dollar range has seemed to be enough for us to keep instructors coming in, cover some costs and keep people signing up. So I think that's kind of the, the sweet spot for us at the moment, it seems.
Any other questions?
I just want to say between this and the last two, I'm just really appreciative of everything that you're doing for bringing in funds and then making these affordable programs. I think it's, as someone who's taken advantage of them and seen others who've used them, I think this is just awesome to see these three items in a row.
Thank you. Yeah, we definitely try. I think we, at this point, about half our budget comes in from non-general fund source. So we're, we're really trying to cover, cover our costs and kind of carry our weight there. But I appreciate that.
Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Community Services Fee Resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Jim, second by Mike. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, we have our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty council schedule.
So again, the schedule is what was presented to you last, okay, good. Nothing has changed since then. Again, it follows our first and third Monday schedule, but for a special meeting to set the tax rate at the end of June and then the budget meetings in January. We do go down to one meeting a month. So this schedule anticipates going down to one meeting a month over the summer. And in November, to give you a little break before budget season and also because it usually falls on Thanksgiving week, which is usually difficult for people to make. And of course also list the Equity Summit on April sixth, intended strategy prioritization retreat in May or June.
I don't recall any particular concerns when we last addressed this. Any questions or concerns come up since then?
What's the, if you can't make a meeting, what's the proper notification?
Let me know.
Just let the mayor know?
Yeah. It's perfectly reasonable to miss one or two throughout the year, personal things going on.
And just as a reminder, you do also have the option to call in to a meeting. It is, it can be challenging on both sides, but you do have that option. But of course, it is also very understandable that people may miss a meeting or two.
We, we have done the call-in participation before, so.
Yep, yeah.
Had a question. It's probably not connected to this schedule, but typically we offer council updates for the town, school, newspaper, newsletter. So will we getting, be getting that under separate cover, I guess, to?
We'll talk about that in the next item.
Oh, there you go.
Good question, though.
Excellent transition.
Any questions or comments from the public on the council schedule? All right. Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty council schedule. Motion by Amy, second by Mike. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, so the last item on our agenda for discussion and potentially approval is council liaison assignments. So for background, we have these various commissions that serve as sort of advisory, policy advisory bodies that feed into, you know, provide information for us. They are currently aligned to operational areas. A couple of them per charter require the mayor to be the liaison there. And then the rest, we want each counselor to have a commission that they are the liaison for. So you'd be attending that monthly meeting for that, that commission, that area. Providing them support to make sure that their work is aligned to the vision of the council. And then bringing back what you're hearing from them, that information, bringing that back to the other members of council. It is a less of a work commitment than the actual council meetings. So don't be too intimidated by adding more and more meetings to your schedule. The, the meeting times are already set here, like these, these commissions already exist and so they already have a, you know, regular occurrence. So please consider that. In the past, we have just sort of had an informal discussion here about where folks' interests lie. We also, Hal, you're still, you're still with the Community Services Department from last year, so this would be an opportunity for you either to continue that work or to switch and bring some fresh eyes to another area. I'd like to first address these, the operational policy commissions and then in page, the last page of the document, there are some additional representation that we can talk about. I guess first of all, do you guys have questions about what participation looks like or what the expectation is? Does anyone have strong feelings about where they would like to, oh, first I have a question for you, Jesse, though. I had thought that housing, because it was a subset of planning, required the mayor to be the liaison. Is that not the case?
So that's historically how we have done it by practice. I don't, I don't think the Housing Commission is anymore responsible to the Planning Commission than it is to you all. So I don't think that charter requirement carries through. Having said that, because housing is such a key priority of the cities and so impacts planning and zoning that comes through the Planning Commission, it makes some sense for that to be the same council liaison, but I don't think it has to.
Okay. Thanks for confirming that. Would anyone like to express strong feelings about a particular area?
I'll, I'll volunteer for public works if you wanna start the ball rolling with that.
Are there any other?
Any other counselors wanna go for?
Oh, I would love to, but that's, there's a conflict there.
I heard that. That's why I'm helping them.
I appreciate you taking that one off.
I mean, I would defer to you and Hal, having the seniority here, if you want to continue on these commissions, I think that that's totally. I mean, I would defer to you and Hal, having the seniority here, if you want to continue on these commissions, I think that that's totally fair. And if not, then we can jump in.
Well, yeah, that's a, it's a good thought, yeah, I certainly would like to continue and go beyond a year.
I will not be continuing at Public Works because I already have planning and zoning to attend to and potentially housing.
And it sounds like Mike wants to do.
Well, the schedule works works for me a little better, too.
Okay. Strong feelings about public safety from either Jim or Amy?
Can I, can I interject, sorry?
Yeah.
So one of, so we are moving forward these assignments because this is what's currently on the books, and we're moving forward. I think just, I'm gonna, you're gonna get really tired of hearing me say, from a historical point of view, the last council, sorry about that. We have had a conversation about better aligning the commission's works, work to the strategic vision areas now with the adoption of the master plan, so using that that work plan, those goals, as the foundation of what your policy commissions look at in a in a year. If we decide to go in that direction sometime in the next couple of months, it is likely that community services and public safety would combine into a safe, healthy, and connected people commission. So just want to throw that out there, I still think it's worth appointing the commission or commission's liaisons tonight, but didn't want to lose sight of that. Municipal infrastructure falls closely to public works, housing falls closely to housing, we don't currently have anything aligned to economic vitality, we need to discuss that. But safe, healthy, connected people really are that intersection between community services and public safety.
Thank you, Jesse. I should, I also should mention that we additionally need an administrative liaison to serve as a point of contact with Jesse in operations on city overall.
And what's that entail?
That's a good question, I've never attended that.
Is it a meeting once a month?
No, it is not usually a meeting once a month, the real point of, so my primary point of contact is the mayor, so on day-to-day operations things, I'm going to the mayor. Really, that role is to think about, for example, in the last year, we've changed a benefit, a significant retirement benefit for the city, we've done a technology transition, so to be updated on things like that and be the shepherds of those decisions through the council with me. All of those things that keep the operations of our organization going, that don't actually crosswalk to a specific department, but but apply to all staff and resources of the city. So if somebody was really interested in kind of the operational nuts and bolts of the organization, that would be a good role.
Christine, I see you signed up for both of them, Eric, why don't you go ahead for the third one? Can Mike lay it off?
I would also put it out there, to Jesse's point earlier, if somebody has a strong feeling about wanting to be the liaison for the Housing Commission, I am open to that. I also am open to continuing that role in alignment with the planning commission liaison role, as is historically current, so.
So then perhaps Amy, you and I need to decide if one of us doesn't want to do a liaison assignment at all, or if you have a strong feeling between housing and public safety?
I definitely wouldn't mind having a liaison assignment, I would not mind being the liaison with the city manager. It doesn't, I don't have strong feelings on any of these, do you?
If I had a preference, I would choose on housing.
Okay.
Could I throw one more caveat in here?
Yeah.
Jump in the gun, so as the mayor mentioned, at the end of this, we also have some liaison roles to outside organizations, which are more or less time-intensive. I think the Downtown Winuski Liaison is going to be quite time-intensive this year because we'll have new leadership, we'll have new partnership opportunities. So you may want to actually think about that as a
That's a great one.
As a more aligned to the liaison role, so for example, somebody could be the administrative person without a with with a conversation with me from time to time, but not a regular meeting, and the Downtown Winuski Liaison, which would be, might equal another liaison role.
So I would just throw out that I I do feel strongly about putting my hat in for the Downtown Winuski Liaison, having been a board member, and still currently a board member, I would resign and would totally feel comfortable being their liaison, I feel very invested in what they're up to, so. No one else feels strongly about that one?
I think you're a good fit.
Great.
You've got the experience down there, so.
So then I will take public safety, and you can take housing.
All right.
Right, that and there, you can stick in that role, per historical force of precedent.
Yeah, you'll have that from time to time. And then for the administrative meetings, were you gonna take that on, Amy?
Yep.
How will you be continuing your role liaison to Partnership for Prevention?
Yes.
Excellent. And then Regional Planning Commission, do we don't, do we select someone from us to represent there?
We do, so, and I'm I'm sorry, I should not have left that blank, those, we currently have appointments, so Mike O'Brien is on the CCRPC board, and Abby Blining is our alternate, so we're, it's not the time of the year to reappoint those.
Okay.
So those are gonna carry forward, and the same with GMT, I should have transferred the copy in case those did.
Okay.
But Ebony and Ray are are both our leaders on the board, Heather's raising her hand.
Winuski Small Business Loan Committee, do we need a liaison to that?
I did talk about it, I didn't forget.
I just wanted to make sure.
I, yeah, we'll talk about those in a second, too. So additionally, there's language in here about providing a monthly update, so this past year, we started as liaisons writing a monthly update on what's happening in that area. There's a schedule in here, so within a few days after your monthly meeting, you would write that update and submit it to Paul, our communications director. So we, as we put those together, we'll post those on Front Porch Forum when they're ready, and then he will share them out on all the city avenues as a way to, you know, just keep information going out. This past year, we also were writing, rotating, on a rotating basis, writing a monthly update for the school newsletter. That actually predated this new format where we're doing the individual ones. There, in the budget for this year, was money allocated to partnering with the school on that newsletter to make it more of a community newsletter instead of just the school. And so as part of that effort, the city would be taking more ownership over that, which Paul would be administering, putting more information out from the city in there. And so I talked to, spoke with Jesse about this, instead of having to write separate updates for the school newsletter, we can work with Paul to take the highlights from what we're already writing on a monthly basis and create one item that covers kind of all the areas for the school newsletter, which would reduce the burden of how many things we're producing.
Good idea.
Sounds good.
So the other thing I want to call out is that there are other two, there are two other commissions mentioned in here, so one is a finance commission that hasn't met in the last two years, and then the all-resident voting charter change commission. I think that's a committee, not a commission, if that matters. So we, the last council, voted to establish that last year. I will be bringing that back in a future meeting as a separate item, because there has been, there's a bill in the House that might address that at a state level, and so we need to rethink the work of this committee before we like push forward with getting that back back in action, essentially. We did the initial, we wrote a charter for the committee and started to solicit volunteers, and so it hasn't actually met yet, so we have a chance now to reframe it for the new political situation. The finance commission, or or committee potentially? I'm not familiar with the history on that, I do know I've seen reference either in the master plan or the housing needs assessment to potentially re, bringing that back to life at some point, but we can talk about that later, too. Since certainly none of you, if we already don't know anything about it, then we need more time for background there. So we have, we have Hal in line for community services, Jim for public safety, Mike for Public Works, myself for planning and housing, Amy for admin, and Downtown Winuski, Hal for Partnership for Prevention, myself for the Mayor's Coalition, and for Airport Sound Mitigation. Any other questions or concerns about liaison roles? If you have questions about like how it works, feel free to reach out later. Any questions or comments from the public?
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
So what I what I did not put on this spreadsheet is that there is a staff person responsible for each commission as well. So if you have questions about the work of the commission historically, or want additional documents or anything like that, there there is a professional staff person who's able to assist on that, and I'll have, now that these are finalized, I'll have each liaison reach out to you all, and maybe set up a coffee or a debrief, but in right in advance of the next meeting, just so you can walk in with some history.
Will this mean if I have my notes, I can bring it to the staff person, they can type it up for me?
You do that right on the computer during the meeting.
Thanks for an easy discussion where things came into alignment.
Can I ask just one more question?
Yeah.
So right now, the Public Works Commission isn't meeting, is that correct? Because they don't have enough members of it, are all of the commissions staffed, or not staffed, but up to a quorumable amount of people at this point?
That's a good question.
It's a great question. So again, the the commission restructure conversation is, has been going on for a while. We have not done a big push for recruitment of commission members because of this potential realignment of commissions to the strategic vision areas. That is not actually the case with the Public Works Commission, because that's the one that will stay, that housing will actually stay the most constant, so we should do a Public Works push recruitment, but other than that, all of the commissions have a quorum.
Good call. Any other questions or comments?
All these commission meetings happen here at City Hall?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, not the downtown, but.
I was wrong, because I've been to a couple of meetings at the Firehouse or at Public Works Building, so just wondering.
I mean, the commission might decide to go on a field trip, that, I think that would be interesting and useful, but but in by standard, they're here.
It's here, okay.
If you're not here, otherwise, they're here.
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the council liaison assignments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by House, second by Mike, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This brings us to the end of our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular city council meeting. Motion by Amy, second by Jim, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.